I missed the first meeting, I mean the first meeting.
Yeah. Was that the last meeting?
I was there.
Oh, sorry, that was cold.
It was me, sorry.
So we'd be confused.
Yeah. The opposite sides of the table froze me off. This side of the table, this side of the table was a little empty last time with Tom.
I thought it was only one over here.
And Tom not being here.
My computer says seven oh one, that says ten minutes.
Mine says five, six fifty-nine. I got by seconds. About as long as you start seeing on the video, but we should be getting to go. Seven o'clock on there.
Okay, seven o'clock, um, we're supposed to start with public hearing, but I'd like to ask for one minute's silence from the queen. Pass you, so if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. Thank you. And then we'll open the public hearing for bylaw number fifteen oh eight twenty-two.
You can be an actual, you can be a doctor.
Oh, you want the adoption first?
Yeah, just because we included it on the agenda for the public hearings.
So, okay, so, uh, administration suggests that we do the adoption of the agenda, and is there any, uh, question on the agenda? Okay, Judy moves it as presented. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Harry, now, call questions in favor. Thank you. Okay, and the, the previous regular meeting of council on August eighth. Any questions, errors, missions? Not now?
I'll move to accept the yes.
Okay, so now, this minutes. Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing done, call questions in favor. It's carried in, thank you. Okay, and now we will move on to the public hearing portion, which is bylaw number fifteen oh eight twenty-two land use bylaw amendment. And so I will give administration an opportunity to speak on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council, uh, this is a redesignation application, uh, to move over three R one designated lots to R four, which is the multi-unit residential district. These lots were subdivided back to two thousand and six and are currently vacant, occupy a total area of just over about a half acre. I guess a few things to note, uh, at this location, there is the, the bit of the ball of the former cul-de-sac there that, uh, we've had discussions about closing a portion of that, which would, um, serve to, um, straighten the northerly property line. Uh, from a planning perspective, a, a corner location like this is often desirable for multi-unit residential development, and you get the benefit of, uh, multiple access points and often more off-street parking, things like that. And a better opportunity to transition from the prevailing single-potash character, uh, of the adjacent lots. Yeah, so I, I think that's the, the main things to note, as you may be known, R four district, all the, all the, uh, noteworthy uses are discretionary uses, things like apartments, three-unit, four-unit dwellings, um, stuff like that. So there's nothing you can really do as a permitted use, meaning that everything will have to come to M P C. And as always with the multi-units, it's important that you get the design stuff right, you know, um, high-quality design and, and things like that that the, the M P C would prevail over. Uh, I think that's, that's all I'd say about this one.
Okay, um, any additions?
No, we, uh, you've all had a chance to read my report, and, uh, Ryan has, has spoke to all those points.
Okay, and, um, so far we've had no...
We received no written by the deadline, and, uh, again, we had one inquiry by the phone, um, just about attending the, uh, public hearing. Obviously don't have anybody that came to the gallery, so.
Okay, thank you. Any counselors have had anything to bring up on it? Okay, thank you, um, being that we, you know, will probably wait, we usually try and wait five minutes to give an opportunity for the public, in case they're a few minutes late, so, um, we'll just leave the public hearing open on this, um, bylaw for five minutes and, and no, uh, any additions, but ask for closure and then closing it. Go back to our visiting, I guess.
Talk about parades. Nobody's heard any feedback from any of the public about this.
Try to look at this, the other one I did now.
Yeah.
Got my ear tuned on a little bit, that's okay.
On the next bylaw, the amend, the amendments?
Yeah. Everybody's favorite phone call from my old.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yes.
I'm glad she's got your name.
Definitely.
What does my wife do? Here's a cellphone. She, she has it because I do business with it, but I thought she didn't find it, I would. And then they could say, go, well, why would you do that?
Because she loves you, Richard.
Keep her from falling in the house.
I never thought of that, actually, that was pretty smart.
She may have gotten one over on you there, Richard.
Yeah, it is what it is.
It is, but sometimes it is a little overpowered.
Yes.
Actually, I've talked to some people in the public about the multi-unit residential rezoning.
Yeah.
And have heard really good things, excellent, or in full support of it.
That's great.
If it's a need that our town has to fill.
Yep. I think it's that first step to buying a house, a young couple, and they step out, get married, get their first place, and then to start that process, you know? It's that first step, that's, we need to create that first step.
Well, it, it goes hand in hand with, um, with our industrial development.
Yeah.
Something comes to town, they need somewhere to live.
Yeah.
It, it's interesting, you say that, that first step, that I don't know how many people in our community have lived in our current seventeen-sweater while they built the house.
Yeah.
There've been quite a few.
Yeah.
Makes them appreciate the house when they move in.
I worked on that seventeen-sweater when I was a second year. That totally holds, it is.
It's served our community pretty well.
Yeah, that's been.
A lot of people that, that house, that apartment building. They do a few parties there, it's still there. Used to be a great place to meet and eat.
How are things at Ors? Have you seen more development happening now that?
Yeah, and, and, uh, we were talking the other day, it seems like we've seen a few more of these multi-unit ones, you know, the four-story, that type of thing. And they did, they changed the building for a few years ago, if I recall, to allow you to do wood framing, up to, I think, to twelve, even, twelve stories.
Wow.
So that's changed the product economics for some of these buildings, and that's a good thing.
You know, with the interest rates going up the way they are too, you know, there's gonna be people won't be able to afford that, into that house, so this is an important, like I said, it's an important first step.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, Clarison has a few, they always come to mine, and then I saw that they got a couple more coming, this mid-rise kind of style. I think they had a builder there back when, I was doing them, right?
Yeah, and that was a fairly good one on the west side as well, uh, fairly large.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's, that's a senior one.
Always that one, a senior, okay, because I noticed they had.
It's a high-class, there's one in Black Diamond, um, same thing, like, there's, there's three identical ones to the one here, the teachers have built this one. The seventeen-sweater that we have in Vulcan. Um, they built three, um, identical ones.
Are you talking about the one that's east of, east of here?
Yeah, the big east is.
Yeah, the great, great building, that, yeah.
But when it was originally built, uh, it was three teachers that built it, okay, they built three.
Smart.
Yeah, yeah, and then, you know, then, of course, they get turned over.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's seven ten, so, um, I'll give, uh, administration opportunity to close on this, and then we can, if you have anything else to add, or any other questions, by?
So now that we've had a held public hearing, uh, we get to the, uh, bylaw portion of our meeting, uh, council can proceed with second and third reading, and that will finalize the bylaw.
Okay, hearing done on this, I will close the, uh, public hearing for bylaw number fifteen oh eight dash twenty-two, and move on to bylaw number fifteen oh nine twenty-two land use amendment. I will turn that back over to the administration.
Okay, um, so these are a series of text amendments that were identified by staff and the M P C, uh, over at the past couple of years. A couple of things that, of course, you're familiar with, the, it seems to be the main one is probably the minimum floor area, and, um, in, in looking at that, that seems to be a bit of a trend in, in the region, we're seeing some of these minimum floor areas come down, in fact, the county did the same thing in some of their districts not long ago. It's worth noting that the building code doesn't prescribe, uh, a hard, they don't quantify a hard, um, square footage. Uh, I believe at one time it did, but it, it doesn't currently, now it's just a function of all the different metrics that are required for, uh, separation distances and stuff like that. So, so five hundred square feet, I mean, perhaps it was a bit arbitrary as to what number to go to, but I think that felt like the, probably the, you know, the smallest size that was comfortable. Worth noting that our, our minimum secondary suite size is three hundred and twenty-three square feet, uh, so, so I feel that's not inappropriate to start there, it provides some more opportunities for folks looking to get in the housing market. The, the other amendments, um, well, the, the ship container one will, uh, serve to provide more flexibility for construction projects, or, I guess, a variety of projects, because ship containers are used so, so commonly these days, uh, without the requirement to, to get a, a development permit, so up to fourteen days, and then, um, provision to extend that to as long as ninety days through a permit process. Uh, we found that this is, this is an approach that's been used throughout the region that seems to work well, a bit of monitoring that goes on, some allowance for a little bit longer, but still pretty tight control of these things. The other two, uh, text amendments are, are really just typographical little edits, cleanup edits, but one thing I, I do want to note, Phil, um, is that I believe we may have missed something, in schedule five, we have a, a... Schedule five of the land use bylaw, section twelve deals with prefabricated dwellings, and the minimum floor area is expressed as a thousand square feet there as well, so, so we text edit, cut the districts, uh, but because we defined prefabricated dwellings as well, we should really change this number. I don't think we'd want to go about a requirement for stick-built dwelling down to five hundred, but we've factory-built at a thousand. So after the public hearing, should you choose, I believe it would be, um, I, I, I think it would be procedurally standard, if we wanted to throw that edit in as well, especially considering that we haven't at least yet received any submissions respecting this, and of course, we're not increasing it, we're decreasing it. So that's the one additional one that I believe I, I missed, draw your attention to that. Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else from the administration?
Uh, no, and the other ones were, were noted, was the carport, I had just wording errors in there. Uh, the one thing on the C cans that they just want to make everybody aware of, is one, one of the things that, uh, we're getting more and more requests for is when folks are moving, they will put everything in a C can and bring it here, and when they move, they want to be able to drop it in the driveway and put it in the house, so we've had more and more requests of that, so that was the initial start for the fourteen days, that would allow somebody to move, and then it's gone. Then we came up with somebody building a new home, uh, we currently have a house that's under construction here, that they are, they've pre-bought most of the materials, and they're actually storing them in Calgary, because they don't have a secure place to put them here. So, one of those, uh, by having that conversation for the ninety days with the extension to a hundred and eighty with a, uh, development permit, will allow onsite, when you're building a home, to be able to store your materials onsite as long as you can keep it within the setbacks. So that was the big driving factor on that, uh, when we had the conversation at the M P C.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or concerns from the counselors? Again, the same question, have you guys had any, what are your question, the, the remarks of changing the wording or anything on any of these?
Just that one phone call.
Alrighty, well, we'll, again, give five minutes, so, to, to allow, in case there's somebody up there, but.
One thing, having grandkids come and live with you for a week, the little one is a germ looking to have, and he brings home everything that makes you sick. He seems to enjoy that.
So, one, one thing of note, when, uh, the M P C talked, I need to talk about it briefly, but the other is, uh, the reason why five hundred was, uh, was mulled around so much, is we went and, uh, through the M P C meeting, we went around and, uh, used the G I S, we brought up square footage of, of particular homes in our, in our community, and there is, there's quite a few that are under that thousand, and so, and we looked at some of the smallest ones, uh, were just in that five fifty, or, sorry, the four fifty range, and so then, conversation goes to building code, well, now building code says that you have to have this wall this far away from this, and you start looking at that, like Ryan said, you could put it, uh, like, uh, Calgary and Edmonton, they've gone to zero, because you just can't physically build a house, but, you know.
The little one is under, it's around five hundred, and, you know, it was a bachelor, now it's a woman, you know, and it had a full basement, I mean.
And, and there, and there is a, there is a, a trend in, uh, in housing right now towards, uh, smaller homes, Tesla's even coming up with a small, very affordable, it's supposed to be ten thousand dollar house, I thought that was, of course, it's, I think at this point it's theoretical, like it has mass produced, but it was pretty neat.
I was on council, council, we increased it from.
To a thousand?
To a thousand, and, um, pushed laws from residents to increase that, uh, square footage. There was a lot of, um, technical words that were used in what small houses were, and some of the ones that live up in, in an area, in that, um, that we previously had discussions with, have talked about, you know, the type of people that live in the small homes, but, yeah, I think that it's, it's just a policy that, you know, goes along with, doesn't matter whether you have a small car, big car, you know, the philosophy of who you are, where you're at, but, but I was on council, and it was raised, that it was raised by the public, that we should increase it so that we don't have, you know, three thousand square foot elsewhere, instead of, you know, five hundred square foot.
One of those older lots for what, twenty-five?
Twenty-five, but we don't have any.
We have one left.
But, I mean, but we have none, but we don't allow twenty-fives anymore.
No, but you said that one is there, and you couldn't, they haven't filled the house.
There's a discussion on, uh, at the M P C, the, uh, town through tax recovery, uh, recovered a twenty-five-foot lot on the north side of town, and with our current setbacks and square footage, you can't put anything on it, so the town is never going to be able to sell that lot for, for development until either house on either side is sold for the purposes of demolition to, uh, people, lots or whatever, so. This would allow a similar home on that spot, similar to the houses on each side, so.
And again, some of these municipalities, you know, have taken one of those infills, allowed it to expand, and so have taken some bigger lots, invited them up, so.
Yeah, but about a small, smaller ones, and it, they look solid.
I think they're building a few smaller ones, too, isn't it? Action porch on front, very cute little area.
Yeah.
Some of the prototypes out there are really, really nicely, but, yeah, big, big outdoor living areas on them, so they have like the full front, like field stuff, full front brand, and everything, and then the small living space, and then the bigger backyard, and they're, they're quite, they're quite nice, you know? And it gives, you know, for people downsizing, those sort of things, that still want to have their own lot, maybe not in a condo association, or in a, in infill portion of the community, where they want all their own grass, and have a garden, backyard, those sorts of things, it's really opens up a lot of opportunity, so.
Well, being that nobody has showed up, we will, uh, keep there the bylaw number fifteen oh nine twenty-two, um, public hearing closed, and it's same with what Kim said, we'll apply it to our agenda, we have an opportunity to vote on it, so we can do it second and third reading tonight, if we so desire, or?
Yeah, with the other amendment, for.
Yeah, with that other amendment, Tom, now.
Whether it be pre-manufactured or.
So, I'm not sure if you want to stay, or you want to step off, but if you would, I'm likely not sure.
Well, I may take you up on that today, I'll stay here a little bit, see, I think it was clear as to the.
The intent.
The prefabricated one, or, I mentioned, we can also.
And we'll, we'll lower the prefabricated to five hundred as well.
Yeah, I'm just going to do it in stage, just.
Excellent. Okay, so, we will move on, um, to our regular agenda, just correspondence information items, um, five point one, the letter from Vulcan County, transition to an amendment service provided contract. So it's, um, quite straightforward, um, we've heard about this for some time, and probably for twelve years, um, anyway, it, um, has come to head, and I guess the question that concerns the county is, you know, should we, you know, send another county that we're interested, we're participating in some discussions with them on, on, as we might.
You know, just listening to the stories from the last few years, and especially the last few months, I can't see the harm in, in Lee sitting down and talking and seeing what the cost of this is, and, you know, and what the legality issues of it is, I, I, I think we have to take a look at it quick, because I, as far as I'm concerned, it might not be a bad idea to have a amendment, you know, be expensive.
Well, it wasn't before, um, before it was cheaper, we were paying nine dollars per capita when we turned it over to the province, and the average of the province was right around twenty-five dollars per capita, and right now it's over, you know, eight hundred dollars per capita for, for, for EMS, so, I'm not sure what they're looking at for numbers, but I, I think that's, you're right, that there's potential, but, but I'll discuss it in a, in a call.
I tend to agree with Richard on this subject, I think, you know, we've potentially already lost lives due to the service we have, and who knows how that will look forward. I think the service is getting worse, not better, so it might be something we can't afford not to do, or at least discuss.
Um, I have a question, um, for instance, uh, if they're sent to, say, one of larger centers, are, because they are not through A H S, are they put as a lower priority coming into, um, a larger hospital, or is this something?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure there'll be some, you know, discussions go about, but I think that we need to sit down, and that's a good question to, to ask, is.
Yeah, just on the.
I, I would say, I would say no, I would say that A H S would lead themselves into a great, like, legal position, because, you know, if I pull up and there are ambulances, I have a patient, a person in my vehicle that's in distress, um, you know, they're technically, they don't kick me out because I'm not an A H S driver, my patient was in my vehicle, so, I would say no, but it's a good point that, you know, of the legalities, like, you know, what's out there, so I think that this is an opportunity to, to, to sit down with the county and, and maybe other municipalities, uh, meeting and see what, um.
Would we be forming a committee for?
I don't, don't know, I, I would, I would, I'm not sure.
At, at this point, the county's asked, uh, just if you'd like to participate and, uh, and to contact them, so, really, at this point, from the, uh, correspondence, you could make a motion to direct administration to send a letter of support, and, uh, that the town of Vulcan is willing to participate in the, uh, that conversation. I want to refer to everybody, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, and again, I, I spoke to the, uh, Mayor Colville, and they're already one step or two steps ahead of us right now, with, with taking that order.
Has it Clarison also?
No, Clarison was in that Willow Creek one, that's, there, there's some letters of, um, threats from A H S, so I think it's going to legal now. But anyway, um, we have a motion on the floor, if there's more discussion, that's great, but we have a motion of Vulcan willing to, to, um, just send a letter of support, and, and so that would be it.
I'm just gonna say, I'm, I'm in support of both the motion, I think, we've been dealing with this for probably a long time, really, you know, that I've been aware of, and I think now that the attention is going to the, now that the cities are aware of what's been going on, and they're having to deal with this, where we've been something we've had to deal with for much longer, I think we need to grab that momentum and go with it now.
Okay.
So, for that motion, uh, the administration drafted letters for it on behalf of council, so the mayor will sign it, uh, and that the town of Vulcan will let you participate in, in their discussions.
Okay, any further discussion on this? If not, call the question in favor. Okay, moving on to five point two, victim services redesignation from, um, Tulfield, town of Tulfield, any questions on this letter? I think, um, Judy and Barbara have been discussing, or bringing this, some of this information back to us in the past, and, um.
We also included the letter from the province in response.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on to five point three, victim services, society in the R C M P, thanking us for participating in the golf tournament, this, you want to, to, Judy?
Yes.
How was it?
It was really good.
Good, good.
Really good, went very, very well.
Was it, well, um, a good number of?
Yeah, we were just, I think, one, one of two teams dropped out at the end, so we were, it might have been one, but, yeah, so it was almost full.
Sounds good. Yeah, because that was one of the ones that happened on the same day as another event, so.
Yeah. It was.
We appreciate that you participated in it, I appreciate it, I promise. Okay, any questions on that one? If not, we'll move on to South Grove's report. Judy?
I just found it, um, funny that they say, it's not funny, um, Southern Alberta feeds the world, has never been more relevant, raveling why, as we face the biggest global food crisis since the Second World War, and then the next thing they start talking about the, the solar projects, which is taking up prime farmland, so, I just thought that was a whole.
Contradictory.
Yes.
Yes.
Being a farmer, I guess, so.
Or you could be the one waste the energy facility that produces fifty megahertz of, uh, megawatts of watt power, that, you know, is, takes up a tenth of the size of what, uh, a solar would produce.
That, that one, uh, travels, it's massive, it's like, just, it's just a sea of, of solar panels. I think it's thirty-five hundred acres, yeah.
Is that it?
You can see it from Mark's, Mark's Lowell, Stevens, you can, you can see it from both, but Mark's Lowell, and I said, what is that? And it's, I haven't been by it.
I'm very interested to see how reclamation of these projects is going to be in future, because I think that soil is going to be dormant for a few years.
Yeah, I've heard some things about what they do after those, or, despite their efficiencies run out.
The only thing that's really nice about the new solar installations is, you know, by going to, um, theoretically. Screw piles and very little cement distribution underneath, it makes it so much nicer, you know, they're not really disturbing the land as much, it's just the water that runs off them, and the way it catches it, the way it doesn't, that's the biggest, I guess, difference. But anyway, thank you, is there anything else on the South Grove? Okay, if not, we can move on to the R C P report, so again, um, Troy has, uh, sent his offer for our proposal, and, um, he does come and visit us, but this is one of the ones he has submitted.
Tries to visit once a year, and then sends reports, uh, quarterly, if he, if he can, and, uh. Tries to visit once a year and then sends reports quarterly if he can, and as you can see, they're inconsistent, so we compare one to the other.
Any questions or comments on that? Okay, hearing none, does somebody wish to file the correspondence? Richard? Okay, any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, call question on favor. It's Carrie, thank you. Okay, moving on to the cash statement.
Everybody's had a chance to have a look at it. You can see we changed the name on the account, on our general account, and that was just an AMTV thing, changing the names on the accounts. So we just clarified to make sure that it can be identified when people are looking back on it. You can also see that under our notice on demand, we had the majority of the funds from the province for our MSI and federal gas tax transfer, and that's due to us through the industrial subdivision. So they afforded us our cash, so we're sitting in a good position financially for paying for the subdivision as we go along, and then being able to do borrowing and whatnot.
Any questions for that cash statement? If not, then entertain a motion. Barbara? Any discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question on favor. Rose, call for your favor.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Drop the ball, buddy.
Okay, moving on to year-to-date.
Again, everybody's had a chance to read through it. There's nothing really that stands out other than under the sewer, again, you need a twenty there until the end of the year, and that's that extra funding that came in for the industrial, county industrial subdivision on the sewer side. We had to put that through our normal operation budget as an in and out, so we had to bring money in, and then we had to move it out to reserve, which...
You have it again.
Uh, it has, so you can see it's, and that's where the expenses are up at eight hundred thousand.
Oh, I see, five hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah, so we're five hundred thousand dollars over budget on expenses, because we moved money out, but we're also probably over in revenues.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Anything else on...
That's really the only thing I've known, plus any of the councils have anything.
Okay, no questions. Call, somebody wish to call? Move this one. Any discussion, calls, motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question on the favor. It's Carrie. Okay, moving on to the bylaws, so seven one, you may as well try and explain this one.
So Will was the only other person that was at this meeting, and then we got it explained. Rose would have been on council before, while, and they've seen this thing over and over and over and over again. We have done a bylaw, as you all know, to be a regional emergency management partnership, so that we can all support each other, the villages, the towns, when we have larger events. Still allows for us to declare our own emergencies when it's within our boundaries, all of those things. We have passed this bylaw twice before. This is our third kick at it. It's been sent to the province, and it needs ministerial approval for this one, and it's been sent back every time. And so this time, you have had a chance to review the report. It's these three wording changes that they would like to see. They don't like word committee in one spot. They don't like the word partnership, because that's referred to in our agreement, and then making sure that we use the word agency, that's right. So this was, we had our meeting, it was August the, yeah, yeah. It was, it was in the beginning of August, I believe it was the tenth, and we reviewed this. The agency sent it back, all of the other municipalities were able to do it, because they had a later August meeting. So we're the last one on the list, everybody else is putting this forward. This is one of those bylaws, you do all three readings if you're happy with it, and we'll send it on to the province again.
I just have one question on your number twelve.
Okay, yes.
In the event of emergency entirely within the boundaries of and only affecting the town of Falkland, the authority empowers, blah, 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 and it gets down...
For the read?
Yes.
Yes, if you look at the one on the board, if you, if you, we have that...
Oh, you changed it.
We had that updated, sorry, and if you've got the old one downloaded on your, on your tablet, it wouldn't have changed it.
I thought that doesn't sound right.
Yes, no, it was updated to the mayor in the bylaw that you're passing, for this one, for right now. Good guess, though.
It is quite disappointing that the province really supports getting rid of all these different agencies and putting everything together and partnering and working together, and then they send it back and, you know, the wants and clerical changes to it, and it is very disappointing that we're trying to reduce work for people by changing things, and yet we increase our workloads to our administration because of a couple words that some bureaucrat stuck on, and...
And having said that, for councils, you are passing the bylaw, but we've been working under that partnership for a few years now, so it seems to be working very well.
Okay, Mike?
I would like to make a motion for the first reading.
Okay, first reading is Mike. Any discussion on Mike's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question on the favor. It's Carrie, thank you. Now it's the second, Judy. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question on the favor. It's Carrie, now it's... So introduce the third, Will. Okay, so Will introduces the third. Any question on Will's motion? Okay, hearing none, call a question on the favor.
I told Will since he's sold mine, I gotta do the, 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 the.
Richard's gonna move the third?
No.
Oh, okay, you don't know, he introduced the third.
He introduced you, you can do third. Now welcome a jerk. So don't, don't do it on the...
Mentioned it, that's why I didn't want to use that word.
Okay, Richard moves the third. Question on Richard's motion. Hearing none, I'll call the question on the favor. It's Carrie, now it's... Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the bylaw number fifteen oh eight twenty-two, land use bylaw, which is the rezoning from R one to R four for those three lots.
Well...
All heard it?
Heard it, made it by the hearing. You could do some of the third reading if you saw...
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
So Richard's making the second reading. Any question on Richard's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question on the favor. It's Carrie. So we can do the third tonight if you wish, or we can postpone it.
Cole?
I'll do the third.
So Cole's gonna do the third. Any question on Cole's motion? Hearing none, call a question on the favor. It's Carrie, now it's... Thank you. Okay, moving on to bylaw number fifteen oh nine twenty-two, land use bylaw amendment. This is the clerical ones with the amendment that was suggested that we do. Can you help me with reading?
Yes, so from the report during the public hearing, it was noted that on prefabricated driving, the minimum floor size remains one thousand square feet or fifty, sorry, ninety-two point nine square meters. And we would ask that council consider an amendment to amend section twelve, twelve-one, proceed to five hundred square feet as well. Should be consistent with the...
Oh, just move the... Great, thank you.
For the amendment.
Judy, second with amendment?
No, she moved the first reading. Oh, the second, I'm sorry, second, I apologize. Second with an amendment. Okay, any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question on the favor. It's Carrie, now it's... Okay, into the third. So we wish to move the third. Okay, any question on Mike's motion? Hearing none, call a question on the favor. It's Carrie, now it's... Okay, thank you very much.
He doesn't want to have a land, he's probably long enough age to have all the...
Hey, moving on to current business. We have a request from the Whispering Creek Condominium Corporation.
So councils all had a chance to read the report. I tried to include as much detail in there for you. We acquired those lands in two thousand and eighteen through back recovery. We sold the lands in two thousand and twenty-two. We set the price for pulling title, and turned out there was enough on there, and we ended up actually losing eight hundred dollars on each lot when we had the final. And most of the sole background on this, I'm not sure if everyone is aware, on these properties, we had some additional work that was done when we, that was done before we took ownership of. There was a basement built that crossed two property lines and then sat for several years, and the property owner would not do anything with them, so it put us where we had to do a re-order on it, and we actually had to hire a contractor to pull the basement and fill the site. And so the town took up those costs, put them on the taxes, and that's why we were so close. But again, you guys can't sell land for any more than, or less than market value, so that's where we were. The condo association heard rumor that we had sold land and we had made some money on it, so they were looking at us to recover. We did let them know that there was no funds left over after we, after we finished paying the taxes and the repairs and whatnot. So they sent a invoice in the town of Walton's name, because they would like to recover their costs. As you can see, all the costs incurred were before we actually took the land. So I did ask them to do a formal letter making this request, but their president got busy working, first mission to council.
So they incurred this cost before we had ownership?
That's right, so the break is over.
This is the amendment.
Cole, move it.
Cole, move it.
Sorry. I don't know personally, I have a real issue with putting that cost under our rate tiers that happened prior to our purchase of the land, especially if we've lost money on it as it is. I don't see it as our cost, sorry.
Will, you had a couple?
So this is the condominium, their maintenance fees on the lots.
And work that they have.
Their cost.
And so one of the conversations those had, you can see that there was some additional costs for, we had a construction waste, the fencing, those sort of things, those were all things that we required the condo association to do when there was an open hole there, like, you know, you need to have stone fencing in front of it, it is a hazard, and it is, because it's inside the condominium, the dry land condominium, it doesn't fall with it. Like we said, the building, through our land use bylaw, we don't go in there and do work, because they own roads, everything. So we requested that they put that, so now, one of the conversations they had is, you know, maybe council should just look at doing the stuff you made us do, and that's not fair, because we made that previous owner do that, but the condo association did that through their own sources, right?
I think that they should have tried to collect those outstanding fees prior to the town taking ownership and kind of coming at the town retroactively is, I'm gonna say, I don't think it's valid personally.
I think, like, it's stated in, I think it's in there. They could have put a K V on it.
Yes, they could have done, you know, on property before it actually went to tax sale, and then it would have been, then it would have been easy for us to do when we pulled the whole title, those...
Especially if you go back, like, you know, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. You know, I mean, it's, it goes back quite ways, and it's not like, I used a phrase earlier in a meeting, but I won't use it again, but it's, you know, disappointing that they, you know, are behind on this. But I think Cole's correct, that it's not fair to the rest of the taxpayers that we pick up on a mistake that was made by the condo association in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I just don't think this is something that we should be paying for, for our taxpayers.
Okay, so...
And potentially had we gone about this prior to the sale, we could have asked for one. Yeah. If the lien was off, we would have denied the title when we, when we pulled title before sale.
I think this isn't over yet.
There is a recommendation on that you either approve or deny, and that makes it very simple. If you approve, you just have to tell us where all the funds from. If you deny, then we'll just send a letter to the council to deny the request.
Okay, Richard?
I'll make the motion to deny this request.
Okay.
Because of all the things we just talked about.
Okay, any other questions or comments or discussion on this? If not, all the questions are in favor. It's Carrie, now it's... Okay, moving on to committee reports. We've got a couple there. So victim services. Any questions on, because we've heard from Judy on this one, but... Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the waste commission. Okay, no questions on that one. Moving on to mayor's briefs. This is the one that was in October, and I only attended it by the Zoom. Okay, then there's Hope Hall there from Seawell.
Thomas is the email and stuff.
Is there any questions on any of those for that?
Is there, I mean, going through this all, is, are we seeing the light?
There is a light, I'm not sure how bright it is, but there's a big, big town.
Okay.
Okay, Marcus Foundation, July twenty-sixth, again, Judy has highlighted probably everything that's, was on there, but any questions? Okay, moving on to golf course. There's a spelling mistake in that one, too, Judy.
Yeah, there was.
I caught that one. It's strange.
I thought I'd go to that tire and fill that one.
I'm not very good at spelling, but it's funny how I caught that one mistake. Any questions for Judy on? Okay, now we'll move on to the flying club. Okay.
Kim, did you receive minutes for the Walton County Regional Goods and Services?
Not yet.
They have not.
Not yet, but it's all.
Okay, any questions or additions on any of those severance? Severance, Mike?
I have a take the motion to accept this for information.
Okay, any discussion on Mike's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question on the favor. It's Carrie, now it's... Okay, moving on to verbals. Councilor Nixon.
I just came here from the attraction and retention committee meeting held at the, at the hospital. That's our first in-person meeting since before COVID. It's always kind of cool to see people again in person. And we went over the video for congratulating the committee for the award that we received back in, it was July. Was it July? So it's been posted onto social media, Life Involved, and I do want to have a look at it and spread the word, and it was really well done. It's a good, good group of people there. And I'd like to thank Richard for attending the flying club committee meeting for me. I did go to the funeral for Jack Nest... I did go to the funeral for Jack Nestor afterwards. That was a good, a good trip there at the curling club. Also during the summer, I went, attended the last outdoor movie at the park. And I wasn't gonna go, just don't walk on my dog, but my goodness, the sound was awesome, the country tunes he had playing. I went back, grabbed Matt, he says, we're gonna go watch the movie for a while, because I was, I couldn't believe the music for the, this quality of the sound. Like, was really well done and for people who say there's nothing to do in town or nothing for the kids, I mean, you just gotta come out. Like, it was really, really well done. And just some comments that I got from people coming into town looking at houses and stuff. It's a continuation. People love how clean, well taken care of, or accomplished. And there's a note across the street from my office with the land club has done. Hats off to you guys for taking down that old building and not tearing down the home by river. He was horrible. He's done up. I mean, things are looking, looking really good. I hope it continues with the town. That's all from my reported this time.
Any questions for Ma? Thank you. Counselor Pope.
As Lyle alluded to, I stepped into his shoes there and went to the airport meeting. It was actually really good. They talked about, they were gonna stop selling fuel to the public because of some legality that happened during that plane crash of that, the two year from the snowbirds. And they went back and I guess they tested some of the fuel and there was water in the fuel they found. And they wanted to see their books, but they weren't up to date in two places, I guess, and they got a fifty thousand dollar fine. So they just didn't feel like it was worth the effort. And they talked about the resurfacing of the remaining cost, they're looking for grants, it's around a hundred and ten thousand bucks with the resurfacing lines. Fixed their radio, I guess they're getting that fixed. And then the other one I went to was Orsk. And one of the executive committee members, Ian Sunquist of Willow Creek, passed away suddenly about a week before that. A week, actually, he was the parade marshal in Staveleyne, he passed the week previous to the parade. And so that was brought up and that, so had to make a motion to just follow the last few months. Then we'll bring it up for election at the end of the year, at the September, or the December one, I believe. And yeah, just talked about some of the stuff going. They mentioned the, they'd been using this system. It's called M W U S T, and it's municipal land use stability tool. And it's, they went and showed us they use it out in the past and it was interesting. They gauge in all your industrial, your residential, your parks, your thing, and they overlay it and say, like, the one I remember is kind of like the industrial land. There was forty-nine thousand acres that was, by the time they overlay everything, you had like eight thousand change that you could use. And so it's, it's just, I think it's kind of common sense, but you know, the Pitcher Peak member, he said that they used it. And with so many people in the room, it gets kind of talked around. But that was about it. It was, I went over the statements, financial statements, that was about it. And then it was a quick meeting, an hour. So that was about it.
Okay, any questions for Richard? No? Thank you. Counselor Smith.
On August tenth, as we were just talking about, I attended the Volcan County Regional Goods Advisory Committee. It's our first meeting that we've had since I started with council. It's really interesting to have all the communities in our county have a plan for, there's a big fire or a flood or whatever it might be. Everyone is kind of a cohesive unit with all the communities. I'm really proud to be a part of it, actually. Also, we're gonna talk about this later, obviously, but I just wanted to bring up that Falcon, the fire department in Vulcan's region responded to fourteen medical calls in August. And two of them, an ambulance was there before the fire department. And that doesn't include the motor vehicle collisions that Vulcan responded to where their mayor may not have been an ambulance, towed from other places. And my upcoming meeting, I have our AGM for the Superior Community Futures on the last Thursday in September, on the twenty-second. And that will be in person. That's it.
Any questions for Will? Thank you. Counselor Sanjul.
Okay, on August eleventh, Victim Services Board had a Zoom call at the county office about the victim services redesign. Government is definitely not willing to do any trauma hours at all, which sounds good, I guess, if you're in the city. Because you have all the, the other services that you need at your fingertips, right? But not so good for rural communities. So as noted in the RCMP report, mental health is up two hundred percent, sixty-two percent since last year. And spousal abuse is up a hundred and twenty-five since two thousand twenty-one as well. And two thousand twenty-two isn't over yet for either one of those. So the stats are just astronomical. So these are, and that's just our local county, that's not provincial or anything. So our biggest concern is, is how we, because they will bring in, I believe, we don't go until we get the packages. But that's why we're looking at, can we keep the trauma manager volunteers alive and well in our communities? So that we can outsource all these, these trauma victims that really need our services. So that's, that's on the victim services. On the golf meeting that was in the minutes provided, I just want to give a big thanks to Jared Smith for stepping up and carrying on with that kids program. It didn't go, but once he, he stepped in and he did have some kids, he took on the junior high kids. And the junior high kids actually have their own tournament tomorrow in the grab. So, and Jared has committed to running the junior program. So if you know any little kids out there that have a great desire to golf, he is a fantastic teacher, so hats off to him. And August twenty-seventh, as I said, I participated in the RCMP victim services golf tournament, well attended. And thank you to all the volunteers. It takes, it takes an army, I tell you, to run these things. So special thanks to Jasmine Raffiano from the victim services and Jade Rube now from the RCMP detachment, Edith Mitchell. August thirtieth, Marcus Foundation, we updated seven policies for better understanding for such things as gifts from the residents. That's an absolute no-no, you can't. And the residents want to know why they can't, so then we had to make her policy more, so they could understand. Changing benefit providers, October first, get this, employees pay less and get more coverage. So where do you see that? So they're changing the provider there. And an issue was dealt with in a closed meeting. Everything's running pretty smoothly. They still have a couple of staff off due surgeries and that, and the other staff are taking over. And, and the residents aren't noticing a big change, so. And we haven't heard anything more. We should hear, I hope, by the end of this month of RCMP, of C M H D. So that was mine.
Okay, any questions for Judy? Okay, here you go. Thank you. Counselor Lou Coffey.
I have some meetings coming up, but I haven't had any over the past three weeks. But thank you very much for pulling the floats all summer, both the guys and all the work that it entails. It was actually a lot of fun, I guess, a lot of Saturdays creating. So, yeah, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Barbara? Here you go. Counselor Leonard.
No formal meetings the last three weeks. I've done a little bit of work with South Girl, the community I'm on with that, everything in person, I should say, or two-time consuming. But I had an incident, a family member needed an ambulance and the fire department responded first. And I give him a lot of credit because it probably saved his life and, you know, for the hour or two that he was there without an ambulance. And that's what I mean, you don't really realize until it hits home and how big of an issue this is. And I really firmly believe if we continue this way, there's gonna be fatalities of people that are potentially related to us. Also responded to a fire north of town and the fire department was excellent on the dot and Will almost ran me over with a fire truck. That was good to see. You guys deserve a lot of credit for what you do. Very thankful for that. Also attended the Nine and Alliance Seer one-year anniversary fund, or not fund, but nine, I guess, four or two. And talked to a lot of people in town about a lot of topics. There was, Will was discussed and it seemed like a lot of people were very happy with how it went this year. Even the locals felt like they had enough time there and it seemed to run very smooth. So a lot of compliments on that. So I don't know exactly who needs the credit for that. Kim, I guess, a lot of it, and others, but everybody else. But yeah, that's been a good plus and it was good to see a lot of people in the community being able and about functioning again, so. And that is it.
Okay, any questions for Cole? Here you go. Thank you. Moving on to me. Yeah, Barbara, I've got about parades. I'd like to thank everybody that participated in the parades. We had eight parades, but nine events, because I can agree, we had the two, the one the day before. So this year, the, like Richard said, sometimes we don't pat ourselves on the back good enough. But we participated in those eight events as counselors. And thank you very much to everybody that was able to participate. I know it's quite a challenge, so sometimes to get the time, make your time to get there. So we went to Champion and then, as I said, the two events in Calgary, Manhattan, Nobleford, Carmigay, Cuthbert, Lockbridge and Coles. And so it was great that everybody that was able to come. And I think it was really great to see, like, Richard was on a couple of them. If you're, it's almost like there was a bit of a rivalry between him and his wife. One was on one side, one was on the other, see which side the crowd would yell about this. I would say Richard probably won, but don't tell Georgina that.
She knows I have a bigger mouth, that's all.
Anyway, no, I think it was well received and, I mean, we get lots of thumbs up for, you know, people, you know, saying how well our float looks and how much effort and time it's taken to put it together. So hats off to the public works, the guys that work on it and get it ready too and make it so that we can get it out there. I had a solid waste meeting, which the minutes of the previous one were there, but we're really working on policies, you know, trying to bring the policies up to date. And we're starting on the budget in the next week or two. So unfortunately, things aren't getting to be any cheaper to do with this waste issue, but hopefully we'll do something. The mayor's reviews was canceled due to the death of the queen, so they canceled that meeting. And they also canceled that policing meeting that was supposed to be the same day. Or the weather, I should say, or so I knew it should probably do that. Seawall has been extremely busy. We've had lots and lots of meetings. I probably have attended at least fifteen in the last month. Some of them are, we were doing these interviews on these three international companies. And they usually take between two and four hours to do these interviews. And we have our last one on Friday and then we have to do the evaluations and all that stuff. So I went to Saskatchewan, I took my laptop and did one, you know, Zoom and hotspun it. First time I ever done that, and which was very successful. And then when I went to B C, we had, I had three meetings. So I'm glad I took my laptop because I didn't expect any of those meetings until I was out there, but it's been really busy. Lyle's comment or question about are we getting any closer? We aren't, but we are. I mean, hopefully, once we get to one of these preferred groups, then the process will move forward quicker. But again, I honestly don't think that, in total honesty, that we will see garbage being inserted or incinerated in this province until for four or five years. You know, the, the process, you know, when you listen to these international companies, you know, what has to be done is just, even though they're building them over in Europe, you know, you think that the process will be quicker, but you know, it's two, two years for engineering and design and, you know, then three years to build. You know, the price has gone from five hundred thousand, five hundred million dollars up to seven hundred million dollars. And they anticipate three to five thousand employees during the build. And then, you know, once it gets built and being run, you know, fifty full-time plus another hundred and fifty contractor positions. So it's too bad that it doesn't look like you can go in the county of Vulcan. It would be great to see that most employment locally, but I don't think we should give up on that yet. I did view today, two o'clock, I watched the Brooks, or the Banff Council meeting live. We had a presentation done at that, and so we, I just watched their presentation. And the one thing that I noticed that the mayor there does, she calls all counselors by their last names. So I'm not sure, hopefully you're not offended by me calling by your first names, but if you are, we can come back. I just, you know.
Just don't call me late for dinner, that's all.
It was quite formal, you know, like the requests, quite formal. And personally, I like to call you by your first names, but if you wish, I can change that.
When you get the right.
Yeah, as long as I get the right. That's why I just see the ball turn towards me. And again, thank you, Judy, to, you know, I, I did view the, the council meeting online when I was out in B C. The only thing that I'm not sure about, whether it was just me, I couldn't hear McLyle when he was speaking, or Barbara, a couple of your motions were quite quiet. I'm not sure if that was just mine, I couldn't increase the volume on my laptop at that bit. Or whether our, our microphone maybe is too high or something, but.
Arsenal tree tones.
Yes, but anyway, other than that, I thought it really went good. It was nice to see and you could see everybody. That was one thing about Brooks, each counselor is individual on theirs. And whereas we, what you see on the screen is what you see. I know, but I mean, but each one was individual. But, but anyway, so if you want some changes made, you know, then maybe do it. If you get a chance to go back in and review a couple of minutes of the council meeting, it's kind of neat to see, you know, some of the things that are, the way it goes across, so. Other than that, that's all it for me. Like I said, Seawall has taken up a huge portion of my time, but I'm glad I retired. Any questions for me?
I just want to state, like everybody else did, I admitted that, to say thank you. You did so much work to you and your wife, Georgina, your daughter, your grandson, I mean, there were so many.
Georgina.
Georgina Lee.
Okay, she's watching the meeting.
Well, she deserved that.
Why would she get it this week?
You need your number away.
Georgina Lee. So, I mean, it was so nice to have spouses or kids, grandkids also come and support. And I think we had a good showing, so thank you for looking after us and getting us there, Tom.
Yeah, it was fun.
Yeah, no, it was, like Richard said, it was, it's a, it's a good time. And I know that both Judy and Barbara, you know, said that, you know, they love to go to Lockbridge. And Joan was pretty mad because originally she would says, oh, great, I can go to Lockbridge this year. And then she had to go visit her mother or someone. But anyway, no, it was great. It was, again, appreciate everybody that can take time out of their time. I know it's a busy schedule everybody has, but it just promotes our community and shows that we support the community, so. Thank you. Anything else? If not, you need a motion to, okay, Barbara? Any discussion on Barbara's motion? We now will call the question notes there. Okay, action list.
So as you can see, we are able to accomplish everything from the last meeting. The, an update on the lease agreement. I sent, I, we got it back from North and Company and I forwarded it off to the AIC Society. They're, they're gonna review it with their executive. One of the things that was brought, and just minor amendments, so North and Company has opened the minor amendments. We wanna make sure that we get those all talked about administratively before we bring it back to you guys as council. Little things like making sure that there's a renewable lease. Like it right now it's stating for fifty years, which is great, but we should also put terminology in there that the idea of this is long term. So there's the opportunity to renew it and those sort of things. So that's been sent off to them as well. Expecting that hopefully back by the end of this month. And the other, obviously, we started putting ice in and it's gonna be ready to go here in a couple of days. And we've looked at this policy side and what we're gonna bring back to them, so that this one should be coming off here fairly soon. But we do have to operate for that here on the policy, so I may just put a reminder and then pull this off. We've actually got the ice in everything. It's just to bring the policy back. So unless there's anything from the outstanding that answers questions on the line.
Do we still need twenty, twenty-two point seven weeks?
I'm going to talk to the applicant and make sure that he's good with pulling the request and with Will. Knowing that we're not going to do anything with that based on developer feedback. So we'll try to get that removed for the next, I have a meeting tomorrow.
Okay, any thoughts, questions? If not, we'll move on to the CEO.
Well, I had a chance to read my report. The stretch between the fifteenth and the fifth was a long stretch, so my report isn't quite as long as it usually is, which probably made you a lot happier. Pretty great to the point. Worked on, with the developer on Whispering Lillows. I will be bringing, hopefully, a plan in the near future for how we can move forward. Again, you know, the risks and the hangups there with having multiple owners and being able to develop an agreement, so we're trying to find a way that we can get some development going on out there without tying each individual owner to a separate development agreement that nobody will ever get anything done. We implemented the procedures for the, thank you for your emails, for the meeting's passing. Again, our policy, you all had a chance to read it. And we were able to drink the pitchers and we'll do the ten days until we receive notice. They're pretty good about letting us know where we are on the procedures inside that. Worked quite a bit with Whispering, Congo Association, the request, they came to the meeting back and forth with that. And I, my formal meetings were the regional emergency management. I met with Christine Holmes for onsite and in the office for discussions on the Lillows. And North and Company, I came in while I was on holidays. I wanted to make sure that nothing was outstanding while I was on holiday, so I ran to North and Company to finish off the paperwork for the land deal for the industrial while I was on the board. And unless there's any questions on anything in there, that's my report.
Just, you know, you're bringing up the land deal for the development out there. Like I see lots of dirt, so the roof house needs to progress.
Yeah, so not quite as quick as, I had an update from CIMA on Friday and not quite as quick as we originally anticipated. They asked for an updated schedule, so that was provided. And still, schedule wise, it looks like they're gonna be able to finish up on time. One of the things, they did ask for some revisions on the timeline for the sewer. Like their water took longer to put in than they anticipated, so they wanna stretch out the time for the sewer as well. They've done the majority of times and everything's gone well on that side. There is, Stu's been working to identify, he thinks that there might be a small leak on our existing infrastructure down by the storage lot, by the main auto body. And they're doing some investigation on the height of there. And the only reason is because the ground out there has been bone dry and they added a little bit of water in that location and testing for clay. So they're gonna investigate on that side. The rest of the project is hammering along. They haven't hit any rock or anything, so. Tom makes sure to dry out there every day, so I've got a source for, if things aren't going as well as they should be. But yeah, no, that's, yeah, it'll be interesting as we get into October when they schedule the concrete for current gutter and those sort of things. Because those are, those are gonna be the biggest weather dependent items.
The reason why they never finished the water line, they've been eating. Now they're going back and doing the sewer line, so it might be because they wanna try and get that machine repaired so they can do the cement, because that's the cement.
Yeah, then they can leave that and go back to the other side.
To the other side, because it's just digging.
They have put piles everywhere on there.
Okay, any questions? Okay. Okay, here it is. We'll move on to public works.
Pretty straightforward with the permits that are in there. As you can see, pristine homes has taken another application out for Whispering Drive, so we're working on that. Good to see houses being built.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions on public work? Here it is. Go to public works.
Stu wanted me to pass on a thank you counsel for the quick response when he was looking at that truck. The timing of that was terrible administratively with the multi and I leaving and looking at things. So I agree that he wanted me to pass on his appreciation to. Sorry.
Just for clarification, he wasn't comfortable with the motor, was it?
No.
Yeah.
So the truck itself, the lift, everything was good, but being that year of diesel, if it dropped a cylinder out, it was cost of twenty grand. People wanna buy something, right? So he wasn't comfortable. My phone call within, my phone with that is we have got feelings for it.
Yep.
If you're not comfortable, the other side of it would be a lot easier administratively when we set it forward with that, so.
He's still worried about any more of these big street, those big leg holes going down. Like that's the third one now, these ones. Are they getting?
And it's the tall, it's the tall ones that have been down. We only have four, five, six of them, so.
Three of them.
Yeah, yeah. It really is a cost that's, that he's most concerned with is, you know, a couple of years ago when they were under a thousand dollars, they're easy to replace. Now, you know, how good is ten thousand dollars to replace three of them? So we do have some taller bowls in Memorial and places like that, but it may come. Go shorter and some are getting taller and others, so I had brief conversations with them. Most likely gonna run over multiple years, but it's.
I just saw you had several incidents of graffiti happening in town.
Yeah.
Actually happened.
Yeah, it kinda comes and goes in phases. Well, we'll have a lot of graffiti for a little while. We worked with the R C M P and made sure that we report everything, we clean it up. Lots of times it'll go in a couple of years until it all of a sudden pops up again. So it's more, we have found that if we catch it quick and get rid of it, it's more of a deterrent than if we leave, you see.
It's really quite disappointing, though, that, you know, generally it's the youth that's involved in the graffiti. And yet they're the ones that we try and offer all these programs, so good for. And I'm not trying to pick on the youth, because I was one that was involved in graffiti when I was young too. But, you know, it, it does generally happen to somebody that's in the younger generation that's doing it. And yet, you know, we're trying to do all these things and try and say there's lots of different programs out there and offer all these things, and yet there seems to always be a bit of a group that doesn't like what's being offered. And so then they get involved in other things. So, you know, I said to the one person that I saw that got involved in the graffiti, I said, I'd like to come over to your house and spray paint your bedroom walls and all your clothes and your car. And they said, well, why would you be stupid enough to do something like that? And I said, just what does you do to the rest of the community? And it is very disappointing that there are a group. And then it gives the whole younger generation this black eye because you're young. So it is disappointing. You're right, little bit, we are seeing more of it. And it seems to be repeated in the same location, even when they try and. So then you end up spending thousands of dollars on, you know, video coverage to try and protect it. And it's just a few that should have, you know, better created problems for us.
It seems to be second going. It'll come, we'll get a run of it, and it goes away for a couple of years. And it will go sometimes three, four years without any.
Very lovely to see where it's being done.
A lot of the stuff that Stu's been talking about was at the schools, the majority, and the.
Then the park, Virginia Mitchell and the bathrooms.
Virginia Mitchell and the skate park.
And the stuff in the bathrooms, the majority is in the female washroom.
Really?
Which usually have more class than men, but diverse communities.
And we've had, Virginia Mitchell is one, and that's why we promote, you know, we support the guys that live in there for the summer, for in our campground, because they treat that like their home. So they kind of watch for them. We've, I, when I was a boat clerk, and I think Tom probably remembers, we had, we had vandalism to the point where they destroyed everything. And like there was nothing left of the bathroom that was going here and all those toilets. They busted all the tiles for all the showers. They pulled things out of the wall. They, there wasn't anything left of it. We had to rebuild it. So we haven't had that again, but it's happened anytime you have something that's open. And there is people in and out of it all the time. I did want to point out for Tom that Stu changed his report to a cemetery.
Yeah, it's not closing anymore.
I knew that was always a.
Well, it was just always a concern that accidentally.
We would do it openly, no closing, so he's changed to already in burials. So I thought you might enjoy that.
Yeah, no, it's always been a concern. Anything else on Stu's? Okay, well, we'll move on to community services.
Chris has put together, as you guys noted from the last meeting, like that format of where everything's at. And so unless there's any questions on the majority of this, it's very, he explains everything in there. The numbers are all there. And then he added the pool attendance statistics for you. So you can see where we are with last year. Not very many, much of a change in swim lessons, obviously, and that's because I have the line paid for all the swim lessons last year. So it is a little bit less there, but not that much.
Is he going to do for us the, you know, county breakdown?
Yes, in, we're on just pool, or he's trying to work on that for all the programs.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, like, when something shuts down, such as the pool, maybe like within the next month, month and a half, we could see, and then after the arena closes, then we can see that.
Yeah, and we have to go back to the registration side because some of these, like pass and then the gate.
Yeah.
The gate, we have no way to track because it's just catch, but the passes we can, so. Because you have to sign up with your address and that.
I was just reading Chris's report here about his meeting with Palister.
Yes.
I think that's gonna be concerning moving forward if there's, I guess, a loss of common ground on some of this joint use. Chris, he's, when I talked to him about the meeting, he said it was a lot more positive than he was led to. But there's still some concerns. Tom's been part of the joint use for a long time. Yeah, it's, it's a concern going forward and we're gonna have to relook at the joint use agreement, so. That's gonna be happening for the next year or so.
Yeah, in defensive Palister, you know, they have other facilities in mind that have taken the template from their relationship with this one and have used it as example to do schools being built in Coldale. It's used a template. Foodhouse used the template that we use here for the one in Blackie, the additions in Blackie. So it can work, it just depends on staff and personnel, unfortunately. You know, I mean, I don't wanna be mean, but it seems though that sometimes, you know, we take ownership and they don't think that, you know, it's mine now, it doesn't belong to the government, it doesn't belong to us as taxpayers. You know, even though we built it, you know, that shop is mine, I should be able to do whatever I want in that shop as a teacher. And that's not the way it works, you know, and so sometimes you have to be reminded. So I think the positive discussion that we have is great to see and hopefully they'll have another joint use and they'll be invited this time in tennis.
Yes.
And so. Any other comments or questions on what?
Just the date for the new lease. It was originally the twenty-sixth August, but it was changed to the second.
Um, in regards to the joint use kind of like there, I'm hoping that Palister and the joint years go actually meet more frequently to actually have something happen. Especially because I do know they're looking at the high school for renovation or demolition and that kind of thing. And the amount of money that was invested by the community into the CRC, I think it's very important for our community to have a voice.
That's why we have, with that, that's why we asked the county if they would start participating in that as well, sort of thing. So we have kind of more of a, more of a political voice at the table. I know he's being on the Palister board, she's been, she's in very regularly talking to Chris about this, so. And like I said, Chris went to his first meeting, quite concerned that there was a breakdown in that. He said it was, it was very positive, so he bases lots of room for improvement and lots of room for us to work together.
And I think too, the joint use committee for years has always went under the philosophy that it was Palister that called the meeting. And I think that, you know, hopefully with the, once they get back, like you said, into more of a routine, they'll realize that, you know, they can, they're actually called by any of the groups, you know, that were at the table. So I think what Ken made a comment about, you know, if we can have the county as a representative there too, then all of a sudden it allows the county to say we've got concerns from ratepayers in our area or the town has concerns from ratepayers and bring it back. And then the ref, you know, part of the town, you know, because we share, you know, facilities, but then, you know, for free, you know, how it should work for us too, so.
And there needs to be some clarification inside the joint use as well, because our joint use is with the facilities and with Palister. And we, when we were dealing with the pool this spring, there was Palister schools within our county that said that they would never get pool time. We offered those to Palister for the schools and I said that they needed to have that conversation internally at Palister too. Because apparently one never got the first day that they wanted or whatever, but we put it to Palister to what time we like.
Yep.
And so I, I think some clarification all the way around is gonna help us a lot so that all of the schools involved get their input into it. They, they wanna bring kids from Carmigay, Chad, parents, wherever the priority falls with it. That's how having county representation, town representation, that, that can all be defined, that, you know, schools get first, but like the county schools get further still.
Yeah.
But it needs to be defined, because right now it just says use of pool and use of arena, so.
See, I have a grandson that goes to a Palister school in the city of Calgary.
He wants to come down?
They, they thought they couldn't come down because they're a Palister school. And he wants it so that he can free.
Absolutely. We need to put the stipulations. But we, as you guys all know, at the pool this year, we had, uh, boys and girls groups. We had girl guys groups and they were busing large groups of kids in teams for this year, which is great because they made a mission and they support our community. So, but when we give the facility for free, we now need to look at what those stipulations are on that.
Yeah, sure.
I have one more question, uh, cause from what I understand, the insurance rates for school rentals have gone up. Now, is that being paid to the town or does that go to Palliser?
No, so we're sort of booking for the schools. And that's specifically what it is, booking for the schools. Uh, for any of our program, we're covered with our insurance. If any one of you privately wants to, uh, book the school, we can do the booking for you, but the insurance is going to have to be done through Palliser. So you either have to provide them with insurance or use their insurance in, uh, in each of these, uh... Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, that's where we are right now. They did ask if we were going to cover for rentals, uh, sort of thing. And we didn't wanna give it to them hardly for every user that wants to use it. Because Palliser's rate for individual users wasn't that bad, so that they can, they can look after that.
Okay, any other questions on Chris's? Okay, moving on to the peace officers.
So we've, uh, implemented a lot of fireworks schedules. It's been working very well. So, and, uh, back open remote, make sure people can see her around. A lot of, working on a lot of bylaw, uh, a lot of unsightly, uh, this type of year, you know, weeks and that sort of thing. So she's issued quite a few orders and we're looking at it.
There was a question that was raised by one counselor about, um, how we stand with, uh, potential reduction in speed. And has she done much?
Yeah, and we're, and we're gonna start working on that, uh, this, this fall, I guess. And no, no, and that's fair enough. Yeah, no, it's, uh, uh, that one's... Yeah, that one went along with the speed side, so. We will bring it forward hopefully for the next three years.
We just, I guess, you know, the thoughts was just to make sure that, you know...
It doesn't go away.
Doesn't go away because it was a question was raised and, and we've, you know, discussed it a bit. And there's pros and cons to eat away and, and, um, something maybe we need to discuss more.
Cause that was previous council passed that.
Yes.
And previous council. I think it was your wife. Careful.
Georgina?
I have had a, uh, a great fear of bringing up a concern about, uh, how loud vehicles are and racing, especially down First, uh, North.
Yep, case first.
And, uh, I said I, I don't know what the noise line was are or...
It would be an excessive noise under the traffic act. So that, that you, that you have to prove that law powers and all of those sort of things.
I guess maybe it would just be, I don't, in the current situation, I don't know how we can set up it.
Well, yeah, we, we partner with the RCFP.
So we won't be into Germans.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it'll be here today, but, uh, well.
Thanks, Will.
I just have to...
Um, so you like...
Thirty-three. Yeah, so what I'll do is I'll pass on a note to, to Gabby about First Avenue and, uh, and see if we can partner on some traffic control in that area. I know she's been doing quite a bit back to school and in those areas.
I think the ones you're, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, you got it.
I think the ones you're talking about, it was, it's, I think when she's done it, down four to five.
It happens at night alone.
Yeah, it happens at night, didn't it?
Yeah.
I think why is nobody stopping this person? Like it just roaring down.
Happens seven, eight on the chip.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's the same vehicles.
And, and like I said, that's, uh, the nice, the nice part with the traffic enforcement is we have several agencies that... This is what I see all the time, you get a week of anchors.
No, it's every night.
I was gonna say it was good to see a peace officer the first day of school because I, even parents are like, uh, school time, time to slow down.
Yeah.
Even my daughter commented, I feel way more safer.
Oh, yeah.
Cause it, it was interesting because we did receive a complaint by a parent when she was there.
A complaint?
Yeah, well, not, not a formal to the province complaint, but, uh, an email saying that enforcement is a need in the first day of school. So, uh, there, there was something said on the source as well, but, uh, but yeah.
But I, but I think that you're right though, that, you know, to show presence that they're there and they're kind of looking. Now, they're not looking at the, the youth that are going to school as much as they're saying.
Parents that are parked everywhere.
And, and also too, to the general public, schools not here, folks. I mean, you know, it doesn't hurt because, I mean, anymore, Lefbridge is really bad. They, they're, um, have about five or six different schools that have all started at different times of years. So you really don't know whether you're in a school zone.
Yep.
Because of the schools in or the school zone is out, you know. So anymore, most of us that travel much in the northeast part of Lefbridge, we...
Drive thirty every...
Thirty every year anymore because it's really bad. So I think you're right to call it.
Well, the leader is to me exceptional. It's not, I'm the authority figure. It's, hey, I'm here, we're working together. Let's just make sure everything's safe. Thank you for passing that along and I will pass that along to her because we did receive the one in place.
It'd be, it, it's just, sorry, it's me. I, I, like, I, I questioned it on a personal side, what you're doing that's that shady when you're dropping your kid off at school that you're not like a peace officer.
Anyway, I would have thought that would be a plus.
Yeah, and, and, and I was there. She actually talked to me when I was dropping, uh, my kids off and, uh, one of the new residents to town that I got to know, um, was dropping his. And we did the introductions and it was, yeah, like she, she was just wandering through, you know, talking to everybody, uh, asking, you know, when, uh, patrol's gonna get set up for the crossing guards, those sort of things. And they need help, you know, all those things. So they, from what I saw, it was very cautious. And I saw Cole twice in classrooms there.
Well, I was pretty shady because I had stitches in my...
At nine in the line, now you went bigger rush line.
There was a hockey stick incident my daughter had with the sword.
She got beat up by a little girl.
Okay, any else on the peace officers? All right, so we'll move on to party.
We'll want to bring out the calls.
Yeah.
Okay, so any other, any comments, questions on Peters? Okay, none. We, it was known to close meetings, so we need a German since, uh, Will's not here.
Do you wanna do the administrative?
I'll do the administrative reports.
Well, I, I probably, I'm, I'm sorry, thank you.
I'll do the administrative.
Thank you, Judy.
That's who I was putting my hand up for.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, that's close.
Okay, so Judy moved the administration reports?
I'll make the admission to the German. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta hold on first one. Sorry.
Will, we have been... Everybody's excited to go, uh...
Judy moves the administration reports. Any question on Judy's motion? Here you have them. Call a question on the favor.
Cole, I don't want you anymore.
Cole moves the German. All in favor? We are officially in charge. We just got a couple of comments.
I just have a couple of questions for everybody before we go and I just need...